For the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say an invocation? None heard? Okay, we'll move on. Items for discussion consideration, the first item for discussion consideration this evening is the St. Charles County Roads and Traffic Managing Director presentation of county's bike walk plan. Ms. Amanda Brower.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, um, thank you for having me tonight. This is great to come talk to the public officials and kind of share some of what's happening in my neck of the woods with you all. So I will say it took me longer than expected to get here. 364 is what everybody says it is in the PM peak hour. And my next MoDOT thing after Route N may be that third lane. Wow. Okay, so anyway, um, okay, I'm going to start just by kind of talking about, I know Matt has given you guys an agreement with FH or with MoDOT for federal funds for Bates Road. So, um, I just kind of wanted, and I know he did, but just kind of reiterate that process and then kind of talk about what we're trying to do on a wider, you know, wider spread with the bike and ped stuff so that you can kind of see the bigger picture. So, um, next slide. Sorry. Okay, so the federal funding agreement that you guys have right now is just the city agreeing for the funds for a project that is substantially similar. Once that's approved, then the process begins where engineering does a study just to kind of analyze what's out there, what, how much traffic is there? You know, is there a turning, a big turn movement somewhere? Is there, um, how much is that left turn, center left turn lane being utilized, that kind of thing? And once they do that, then they'll kind of put together some perceptual designs based on all of that and then have a public meeting. So I just want to reiterate that everything has to go through a public process. So the public will see it, and if they don't like something that's proposed, um, generally it, I mean, really, um, always it can be changed. Like, that's part of the process and, you know, other than doing something illegal or not safe. It's, it's, you, we use that feedback and we understand that there are times when the public is not okay with certain things. So I just want to reiterate that, reiterate that by, you know, agreeing with the agreement, you're not saying this is what we're going to build. You don't know that yet. Um, next slide. So just as an overview, I'm sure it's been touched on right now, um, this is a different road, but right now you have two lanes and a center, center left turn lane, um, a sidewalk, I think on one side. Uh, next slide. So we're just trying to look at, can we make that instead, um, kind of narrower lanes in the, in the middle of the road, take away the, the turn lane, the constant turn lane? That doesn't mean if there's a turn lane needed at an intersection that they can't have one because the bike lanes can always kind of taper into that share of the road for an intersection so that you can get back out and, uh, and have your left turn movement. So that's obviously would be looked at, but you know, for the, for the link, for the most of the link, we would like to see, um, a buffered bike lane so that bikes can safely traverse the area. Um, and because I think getting a path on this road, a wider 10-foot side path to accommodate bikes is probably not in the near term. So we were just kind of trying to figure out ways to accommodate that. Next slide. Okay, so this is the big picture and it's hard to see, but Bates is kind of over on the right side of the picture. It's kind of straight, straight up and down and it's a dark blue line which is signifying the bike lanes. This is just the overall plan for this portion of the county. And you can just see, um, how much connectivity there really is or is planned to be. And a lot of it exists or a lot of it is like in a funded state. So we are really, really trying to focus on creating an alternative transportation system because we have no transit in the county. There are people that don't have cars or can't drive cars. They're seeing that a lot with the aging population, like maybe they can ride an e-bike, but they, they, you know, can't drive a car. So is there an opportunity to give people another mode of transportation? And you, you know, that you can connect to the things you need to get to. And you can see on this, you know, if you went up to the outer road from Bates, you can get all the way over to Hawk Ridge and get on Route N. And Route N will have a 10-foot shared use path. So you would then have access to all of those amenities over there and many, many more. So next slide. And the next slide goes the other direction and just shows that, um, Henning Road is also going to have a path and that will lead you to Darton Greenway, which is rapidly being constructed in both directions. We have a lot of funding for it. We have a lot of things happening. It's a beautiful greenway, um, a great amenity. So for recreational purposes, um, that's a great asset to be able to just jump on your bike at home and ride right to that trail and have a nice, a nice long bike ride if you want that. Next slide. So this is our branding for the Bike Walk, um, initiative that we've started. So basically we came up with this signage that will identify a connected network that's not, um, just like one city. So we have, like, the city of St. Peters has their own bike network, bike network, but they're also pretty big. So, um, you know, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty big and it goes other places. But once you get out of St. Peters, there's nothing to tell you, hey, does it go somewhere else? So we really wanted to see, um, especially out here in the western portion where there's a lot of crossover. We really wanted to see something where you could have a consistent pathway, a consistent marking for a trail that might go from, um, O'Fallon to Darton Prairie, back to O'Fallon to Lake St. Louis. I mean, literally, I'm, I'm thinking there are some of those. Um, so this is that. So the, the middle sign or the first sign is just, um, uh, the guide signs that give you a, an destination and a, and a mileage. And then the next one is a pavement marking that will actually go on the pathway, um, to kind of identify directions. So it'd be on the right side just to mark that it's a side path. And then the bikeway sign is for just a bike lane and the bike walk sign will be for the pathways that are off the road next to, next to the spot, or next to the pathway itself. And then the little graphic on the bottom just shows, um, the, and I'm sorry, this is hard to read for those in the audience, but it shows the confidence level of bicyclists. And, um, 12% of bicyclists are confident and willing to ride on a roadway, like just any roadway wherever it is. Then there's another 51% of the population that would ride if they felt safe. So we're really trying to get that bigger mass of people that kind of want to be out there, but really can't get out there because, you know, they don't feel like they can safely get from point A to point B. Next slide. And then this is the Bike Walk, um, project that we are doing right now. Actually, we're going out to bid in December. So this is going to connect 18 miles to our Phase One project. What's been happening over like the last 10 years is we've put in a lot of roadways with a 10-foot side path next to them. But there's a lot that have either a missing gap or like a piece of the path that's just crumbled, deteriorated, deteriorated and is unusable. Um, so we went back and kind of looked at a few locations where we realized that we had a really nice network very close to complete and filled in gaps. And we got federal funds to, um, do this project, which will fill in all those gaps, add the signing, add the pavement marking, and create this 18 miles of complete bike, bikeway, bike walk. There is a few that are bike lanes, but it's primarily a side path. Next slide. Oh, actually go back really quick, sorry. I also wanted to point out that from Great South Outer Road to Hawk Ridge Trail, which will, on Route N, which will eventually have another, um, side path, is two and a half miles. So that's like a 15 to 20 minute ride for a kid on a bicycle. So I'm just like, to go from your neighborhood along Bates Road and be able to go to Chick-fil-A or Andy's or, you know, one of those places, it's just kind of a fun little thing to think about, like. Next slide. Okay, so Bates Road has about, well, according to MoDOT, 1680 vehicles a day each direction, which is very low. So we, just kind of looking at those volumes, we really feel like the turn lane is probably not highly utilized. And even if there's a turning movement, there's very sufficient gaps for that turn to be made and it would not really delay traffic significantly. Next slide. So this is the left turn warrant. This is just kind of an engineering method of figuring out if a left turn lane is required or not. It's not done for anything, but this is what we would do to kind of analyze the left turns and see, um, what, what criteria they meet. Next slide. And then, um, I'm not going to get into this. I, I don't want to belabor or take too long. But there's a ton of research now about, um, how we have really overdesigned our roadways. There was a time where, you know, engineers felt like the, the wider we could make the shoulder, the, the more space we could give the driver, the safer it was going to be. The problem with that on these types of road is when you sign it for 35 miles per hour, nobody's going to go 35 miles per hour. They're going to see this wide open road and they're going to say, I can go 50 miles per hour. And that's all well and good until there's a person on the, on sidewalk, a person trying to cross the street and, you know, somebody gets distracted and that's, I mean, that's a fatality. So we've really, in the engineering world, started focusing on how do we prevent deaths? How do we get people to slow down in these more neighborhood scenarios? And to do that, we've found that narrowing lanes is a significant, um, way to get people to actually go slower. So if you remove that center turn, you're going, uh, center turn lane, reduce those lanes down to 11 feet is kind of actually my preferred, and then buffer some bike lanes, people feel more constrained. So they stay more focused on their driving task and less, um, are kind of, are less likely to speed. They are going to not feel comfortable going over 35 miles per hour. And that's really what we're trying to do overarching, um, countywide, bike lanes or not. Safety is a really, really big focus right now. And, um, this is kind of why we're so focused on that. So I'll just, you can scroll through these slides, but I'm not going to dwell on anything. So that's just some information about the crashes. Next one, there's information about speeds. When you move to 35 miles per hour, wider lanes become significantly more dangerous. This was a John Hopkins study. Next, next slide. And then this is the, uh, USDOT FHWA Safe System Approach that really puts the onus on everybody. We want, um, road users to be safe. That means going the speed limit. That means wearing protective gear if you're a biker or walker. That means, um, watching where you're going, like all the things. And, you know, safe speeds is in there and then obviously safe vehicles, the, the new vehicles with the automatic stopping and all that thing are great for all of this. But it's a whole system that everybody needs to do their part. Next slide. Um, and I'm not going to do this. Next slide. I think that's it. Okay, okay, that's all I have. Any questions? Sorry, I was kind of, yeah, it took a while. I'm sorry.
Okay, I got a question.
Okay.
So go back to what you said in the beginning. You talked about, uh, the process. So if we were to approve this, you're going to do a study of how the road is now?
Yeah.
And then did you, just to clarify, did you say we could put in turn lanes where they're needed?
Yes, definitely, definitely. And that's a safety thing. We, we definitely want there to be turn lanes where they're needed.
What would you do with the bike lanes at that point?
They just, they just, it's like that, the sharos, they just kind of roll into that through lane. And they just put that sign there and people know. I mean, when it's not short of a van, it's not as dangerous. It's not as much of a hindrance to a bicyclist to go through a intersection as it is to ride a whole one-mile stretch of road without a, without a lane.
Thanks. And I also have another question related to what would qualify as, you know, for the roads here. Cottleville has a lot of wide bike trails and paths that accommodate, uh, bicycles as well as golf carts.
Yes.
They have a significant number of those trails over there. And I think if I'm remembering right, some of those intersect into the, what would be considered part of the greenway. Or, or am I, and do those roads or those pathways qualify, uh, for this, you know, along the side of a road? Particularly right now, they, they're taking from the, basically from the road in a very large swath of sidewalk, uh, right off the road, uh, instead of actually doing it on the road as you're going in from 364 into Cottleville. And I can't remember the.
Gudermuth.
By the soccer barn. Yeah, there you go.
Yes.
Does that qualify, that sort of, for our own edification of the board in the future as we look at design?
Yeah.
Does that qualify?
So, um, we've actually had many, many discussions about this. The Gudermuth pathway is 14 feet wide so that they can allow golf carts on it and still say it's, it's safe for bicyclists and pedestrians. The research we've found pretty much says that that width is kind of the minimum that can, um, handle all of those users. It's, it's still not ideal. I, I'm not a lover of golf carts on the pathways. But it's, we are, if we are going to sign it in our network, it is going to have to be 14 feet. So I know they have more narrow ones within their developments and then kind of a couple that I think are a long route in that are really only eight feet.
Could our, could our design on Bates Road incorporate a 14-foot wide sidewalk instead of getting rid of the bike, the, the middle lane? Would that satisfy the requirement? It's just a hypothetical question.
Yeah, I, yes. I mean, I don't, I don't know that all of that was it, but yeah.
I'm not sure if that's the answer, but just as we look to, to solve this, you know, trying to understand that.
Right, right. And accepting the funding agreement makes, I mean, does not lock, like I said, not lock you in. So that's always an option to look at. Yeah.
So with Bates Road going down where it does, there's numerous entrances to subdivisions down that way. So if, uh, we put a turn lane in all of them, that would eliminate somewhat of all the bike path.
Yes.
But, so in that other part, uh, in the process, then there'll be, uh, open public meetings where people can talk about it.
Yes.
And what happens if we have enough people that say, nah, I really don't like that?
Then we figure out something else. It's either, yeah, like we look at the feasibility of doing an off-road, um, accommodation. We have been able to in the past to, um, just say, we're going to put sharos and that, we're going to put the share of the road, the whole length, and that's our bicycle accommodation to, um, meet the federal fund, you know, the, the requirement that the federal funds gave us. So there, yeah, there's options to go back to Eastless Gateway and MoDOT and say, hey, this isn't going to fly. We're going to, we're going to do, can we do this instead? And nine-ten, I mean, 95% of the time, they're going to go with that.
Okay, so if we approve this to go forward, then we'll have open meetings. We'll have the opportunity to hear from as many people that want to talk about it. Then you've got the option of saying, okay, we're not going to do that.
Correct.
I'd like to go back and just, I was comparing Cottleville, they have golf carts in their community. But you said 14 foot's the minimum for golf carts. But what are the other off-road for bicycles? What's the off-road sidewalk requirement?
10.
Yeah, alright.
Yep.
I have a question if you don't mind. In our neighboring county of St. Louis County and in some of the municipalities, like Chesterfield as an example, there was an effort put forth by the Missouri Department of Transportation to attempt to slow traffic on some of the more congested roads like Clarkson. And they decided to build these concrete barriers in the, um, neighboring areas along the road to try to cause people to slow down. All it did was, one, make everybody mad. Two, waste a whole lot of money because they had to come back and tear it all out.
Yep.
Communication on it was extremely poor. No one knew it was coming until it was done for intensive purposes. When I look at this, I see the size of the, of the road that is being proposed, going from what it is today to what it would be by adding bike lanes on both sides. Is the objective really here to slow traffic?
Somewhat, yes. I mean, it is to slow traffic and, and accommodate bicycles, um, by accommodating bicycles. Obviously you want people to go slower because if somebody's speeding down the road at fire at 45 miles per hour and there's a bicycle next to them, the bicycle's still not going to feel very comfortable. Nobody's, nobody's still going to want to ride with their kids down that facility.
But, um, I know that, um, there was a study, as you showed us the numbers relative to the traffic pattern, the traffic numbers. Was there a similar study done for the number of people riding bicycles on those streets right now? Because I, I'm on that road constantly and it's pretty rare that I see somebody on a bicycle. Now granted, there's no bike lane, okay? But I also don't see them on sidewalks either. And I'm just kind of wondering what the, you know, what the real true use of that lane, you know, that we're providing them is going to be versus just shrinking the driving section down to the point of trying to slow traffic.
Right. Um, no, we do not have data. I should have pulled the Strava data to see how many are actually using it now. Generally speaking, around the county, there act, there are a fair amount of people that bike on the roadways. Not a huge number because you're drawing from that 12% confident riders. I mean, like I said, Bates is a straight, a straight path, wide open. I, I didn't pull speed data. I meant to. I had a crazy day. But I'm sure the speeds are probably in the, the 40 to 45 range. I don't know. Anyway, like it, it's, yes, like constraining it is shown to get people to slow down. And, um, I can say from experience that I, I think it does. Now, the MoDOT project was a horrible, horrible situation. There was no public meeting. It's a, Clarkson is obviously not Bates. It's, you know, a huge road. People were going very fast. This is obviously totally different than that. But, you know, if you live in one of these neighborhoods and your kid, you live at the industry and your kids want to walk out on the sidewalk, I, I do feel like narrowing the road and, and making it, um, just a little bit more constrictive for the driver would make me feel better as a parent.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
I'd like to know why, we just did Town Square Boulevard, just did an overlay, got funding. Bike path is painted on the road. We didn't have to do anything other than paint it on the road. Stump Road, just did a whole big thing with Stump Road. They had to have a turn lane on that road, had to have it or we wouldn't get funding. That's a much smaller road than Bates with much fewer people living on and off that road than Bates. And it has the bike lane painted on the road, correct? So Bates Road, um, which is in my ward, um, is, has houses and subdivisions on both sides, which get, not only do they get a lot of residents coming in and out of those areas, turning in and out of those areas, but we have a lot of school buses. We have at least six or eight buses a day that have to go in and out of that road and make turns in and out of those subdivisions. And my fear is you're going to narrow that road, you're going to take away that center lane, and you're going to cause an incident with one or two bikers. That's, you're not going to, I have never seen a biker on that road all the times I've traveled that road. But you're going to take tho, that extra lane away and, which is going to impede traffic when a bus has to wait to make a turn into, left-hand turn into a subdivision coming either way. You're going to impede the traffic behind that bus. And I can guarantee you, you're going to have a car pass that bus. It happens all the time. So I feel like requiring us to take out that center lane all the way down that road to put bike paths in that maybe one or two people are going to ride in a day is creating an issue for the other people that travel that road all the time. And I just don't see why we're required to do that there when it's not been required in other places. And if you wanted to take a road that you really could improve with federal funds and MoDOT, go on Highway N over on my other side of Ward 2, where we have no shoulders, no sidewalks and no bike paths. And people have to walk in the road to go where they want to go down to the shopping centers. That I would be all for, but I can't see taking this turn lane away from these people. I think you're going to create more problems and they're just, you know, it, there's already enough problems getting in and out of Bates Road, which that center turn lane is not going to make a difference for. But you, taking that center turn lane is not the solution to giving someone the ability to ride a bike.
And we're not requiring anything. We just want to utilize the funding that has been provided and look into what the, what makes sense on this road. And if it's, if the turn lane needs to be there, that's okay. That's, we're not, we're not trying to take away any of the roadway. So, I mean, a bike lane is still a piece of road. If a bus needs to be, you know, be in it, it's okay. And bicyclists always need to pay attention to what they're doing. I've heard this argument before. But if you're a, some, like, bicyclists now, I think, do not pay attention. They're very much like, this is my road. I'm going to do whatever I want. But if you're in that group of not overly competent, I can tell you that I'm a parent of a 12, 11 and an eight-year-old. And we go on bike rides and we are very aware of our surroundings. They know that they always have to be watching where they're going. There's no telling what somebody's going to do, but we are still going to, we're still going to do that. We, we find that as something that we value as a family and we will ride on a road that we feel is, for the most part, safe. And we will make sure that we are aware of our surroundings at all time. I mean, that's part of driving now too. You have to be defensive. So again, we're not requiring anything. We will look into the traffic volumes. We will look into turn volumes. We will likely have MyoVision video that we can pull up and say, you know, this is what we saw. We watched all, all day. So, you know, I, if a bus is really waiting, you know, an extensive amount of time to make a turn, then there's going to be a turn lane there. If there's gaps, I can tell you, you know, I, I live on a very heavy traffic two-lane road and there are buses. There are school drop-offs and, and it's not always ideal, but it, it works. Like, everybody makes it. Nobody's sitting around for an extra 10 minutes every day. So, um, is it, you know, it, it might be a little bit of a hindrance, but it, you're talking 30 seconds, really. And again.
Just real quick.
Yep.
I just want to remind the board that this was a grant that we applied for. And Amanda, I, I do agree that it's some. I just wanna remind the board that this was a grant that we applied for and Amanda, I do agree that it's some, ifs and, ifs and little things that we don't like and dislike, but the goal is to fix the street. But the main thing is, I wanna ask you, is to make sure, will the meetings be here for those meetings? And I just wanna make sure it won't be any other Cole County, this, all meetings will be here. That's what I just wanna confirm that.
Yes, your public meeting.
Okay, just making sure that our community can come here.
Yes.
Talk to you and see everything you're talking about.
Yes, yep. And they're usually posted online, too, and you have like a three-week comment period after the meeting. Yeah.
Hi, I have a couple questions. There was a discussion about where the public can see the plan earlier in the process. Where, where could they see? Cause it seems like this bike path, center lane thing, I mean, it kinda just creeped up on me. I mean, I think a lot of us were pretty surprised about it. So where can the general public see things like that?
I don't know if the application has a drawing. So the road board application for my funding is out online. It is public. I don't think it illustrates, and I actually don't know. Does the STP have an illustration? Okay, yeah. So, you know, like I said, we're not, we haven't designed anything. We've just put in an application for a project that includes bike accommodation. Did it originally say bike lanes? Yes, because MoDOT, that's what they automatically put in. Does it have to be bike lanes? Not necessarily.
Okay, bike lanes that were painted on Stump Road, and this goes back to maybe six months ago, in the street, people are now biking on the sidewalk, so. And, and I can say this, not very many people are riding their bike on Stump Road. And, and what's interesting there is that the residents in Ward 1 did not want the turn lane, but we were told we had to have the turn lane. And then we were, we were also told that no changes could be made. So now we're hearing changes can be made. And so I'm kinda confused because I've heard different stories.
And I think, you know, the, the engineer, we, I'll step back. We kind of just really started pushing this recently as we got into this Gateway Bike Plan. We've really just completed, it's, it's not really, it's not even public. Like, we've just kind of completed this brand. How do we connect all of this? So this is very new. As far as Stump Road, I have probably had 300 projects in the last 10 years that I've funded, or more than that. So I, I can't specifically remember what Stump Road included or what it did, but I'm sure, I'm, I'm guessing that the people making the decisions kinda pushed for one thing and we weren't pushing for something else at that point. So the applications we got were kind of what we went with. Now we're really starting to push back and say, hey, can we look at this? Can we maybe do something different?
So that's a falsehood that something can't be changed?
I, I mean, I don't know what you mean change, like the, what they applied for?
Like we're talking about maybe being able to put a turn lane in certain areas or whatever, and it's not really showing that now? Those kinda changes, cause that seems like that's the big, one of the big encumbrances on this project.
Yeah, I mean, the plans are not specific. There's no, like, there's no drawing of what we're doing.
That makes me nervous about vote, about voting on something where there's a lot of ambiguity. Could you explain how the points system that cities apply for, like a road project like that? How that impacts the decisions that you make? Cause that was the other thing that we were told with Stump Road. We have to have all these things in so we can get all these points, so we can get all this money.
That's, that's true. Yes. Well, East West Gateway has a certain points that they account for every bike accommodation. There's different points for different things. Now, like I said, I, I, I don't think anybody asked to change anything in Stump Road. Because I think if there was a, a push for something, they could've gone back to East West Gateway and asked for something to change. That is, it's, it's not a, this is what you're doing thing. It can definitely always go back, especially if the public says they don't like what you're doing. I, I don't know specifics on that, but on the, I mean, like I said, on this project, you know, the public process is, is a very important part of it. And, and yes, we're pushing this because we want to connect this network, but if other people don't want this, we'll, we'll draw up something else. We'll, you know.
So does the point system, is that making the idea of having the bike lanes, if you include the, the bike lanes there, the points are better to get better funding?
Yes. And, and when you come to me for funds, I'm telling you, I want you to, I want you to try to do these. And that's because I want you to try. If, if you get to the public part and they say, we absolutely don't want this, we really like what we have, that's fine. But at least I had you try and I can get that feedback and add it to my, my information that like, we want to be data-driven. We want to kind of understand what people want. And honestly, when I go out in the public for like master plan meetings or different things, I hear that people want bike accommodations. So maybe, you know, if it comes to your sure street, not everybody is, is gonna say that they want that, but there are people out there. So I do want to put it out there and get that feedback.
To be clear on this project, this is for design funding. It has not, as to Amanda's point, it has not been designed yet. So what was submitted in the application for grant funding was a concept put together by that city engineer of what the improvements would be, and it was structured to get points to get funding, correct?
Yep.
So that's why you don't see drawings or have any clear specifics about the roadway design, cause it actually has not been designed yet.
Yeah. And the federal, the federal application literally has like checkboxes with points assigned. Mine's a little more broad, but like I said, we do, we do consider that and we ask for that, so.
Will the board have an opportunity to vote on a final design again, just to be clear?
That's up to.
Is that, can we, can we set that precedent up?
I don't think the city wants to move forward on a project that's not supported. Absolutely. To answer your question, that would be a yes.
The answer is yes. That's, the city would have an additional opportunity to vote on a final project plan, since there's nothing drawn up now. I just wanted to make sure, clear on that.
And I would take the conversation in this meeting as input into the design process when Matt is working with the designer related to these concerns. Make sure those are shared. But then before the design is final, there would be an opportunity for public comment and board review.
Yep. So just for clarification, the point system, which is used to give this idea of a design, if things are changed, won't that impact the funding?
Yes. Well, it, it impacts the point, but.
Which impact the funding, right?
Generally, especially right now, I don't, I don't, um, generally, East West Gateway will not take away your funds. If you've gone through the process and like the public says, hey, we are not standing for this. You can't do this. Like, we just want you to, you know, redo the road the way it is and whatever. The, the funding is, is, like I said, almost always still left because you did the process. We've had projects that we've taken things out of and we've maintained our funding.
When, when I spoke with East West Gateway, they said if we remove the bike lanes, it would be a project scope change, resubmital. And that pro, the project is currently already on threshold for funding. And removing the bike lanes is three points plus four points of safety.
Okay.
So seven points, and we would drop below the threshold and we would lose funding.
Okay.
So that's just.
Okay. Is that if you did it? That's if you did it right now?
Right now.
I think once you. I'm just, yeah, yeah. That, that's accurate.
Either way, we would have an opportunity to, the board would have an opportunity to vote on it again, to approve or disapprove, whatever that final design is. That's, I think, what the important part is here. For just getting through to approval for design phase at this point, which would then secure the funding.
Right.
For that. And the board would still have the opportunity to climb moving forward at a, at a later date. So that's kinda what I'm, what I'm hearing is important part of all this, but go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Alderman, get him on.
No, it's, it's fine. I think I've asked all of, I mean, I, I just feel very uncertain about voting on something on a point-based system that we're told that we can make changes on, when again, and I realize it's the prior administration that told us we couldn't make changes because it affects the funding that is made by the road board and the federal government. And, yeah, it sounds like that's probably the case, but it's not contractually
well, and I, in stone. I will also say that if you get through design and then like you, you don't wanna do it the way it is, they will, they'll still, maybe they'll take away the construction funds, but you'll still get reimbursed for what you put in. So, you know, maybe you have to go back and, and redo construction, but which isn't ideal, but you know, you've still gotten something out of the, the funding and you know more than you knew before.
Okay. Any further questions for Mrs. Brower?
I just wanna say thank you for enlightening us on a lot of issues that you brought up, and thank you for taking the time to come with us.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Brower, thank you. I echo the same sentiments. Thank you for coming out and we learned a lot today. And I appreciate your time. Next up on the agenda is Barrett Haven Boulevard Streetlights. Our city minister, Kathy Pratt, will take the lead on that one.
Thank you. The property management company representing the HOA for Barrett Haven approached the city to fund the electric expense for Barrett Haven's streetlights. There are 16 lights on this minor collector road with an approximate cost of $325 a month or $3,900 a year. The, the agreement that, that the property management company is presenting on behalf of Ameren is that the lights would be owned and maintained by Ameren. The city would have the expense related to, could take on the expense related to the electricity itself. In reviewing other city's streetlights, we have several minor collectors and several major collectors in the cities, but many of those don't have streetlights. We do currently fund the electric expense for many of the intersections. So for example, Highway N and Stump and Bates and Fizey, we're paying for those streetlights. At Bates and some of the intersections there and Weldon Spring, we have two lights. Henning does not have lights. I mean Bates and Stump Road themselves do not have lights. There's just lights at the intersection. We also pick up the lights for Hanley here at City Hall and one light by St. William's Apartments. And that was when we were had the uptown zoning and we were looking at trying to have a consistent look and feel in that area. We also have a light at Georgetown Park entrance. In conversation with the city attorney related to this, if this is something the city would like to move forward with, he would like to see us enter into an actual agreement with Ameren and the HOA specific related to the streetlights, rather than just take over the bill from Ameren itself.
I have a question for you, Kid. What was the HOA plans or when the subdivision first started? Was it that the HOA had the lights covered? Like, what was that? Or do you know, or do we have that information? I'm sorry.
I don't know what the HOA intended. That wasn't necessarily something that would go through the city. There was, there is a TDD and a CID on this property. There was reference to streetlights. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I don't, I don't know about the HOA's intentions or what the streetlights, cause we don't get, the city typically does not get involved in those type of arrangements. There was a CID and a TDD, both of which make reference to streetlights without any specificity in the maintenance of them and dedication of them, but that dedication never occurred.
I am guessing on this, but just the same as, I know that Inverness does not have an HOA yet, right? You guys have a representative, or has it graduated yet or? So you have one representative. And I believe that is, you know, the developers, it was Paul McKee who, I believe it was Paul McKee who was the developer over Barrett Haven back in 2005, 6, 7, 8 timeframe. The development company that, you know, built it would have sort of structured all that, and then it would have handed it over to the HOA. So the HOA wouldn't have had an intention of where, when, they would have basically adopted whatever was set up by the development company, similar to Inverness and the development company there. It'll hand over and then it'll tell the HOA when it's, it starts, says, hey, here's what you have, you know? But anyway, so that, just throw a little structure around the question as far as, you know, what was the HOA's intent? The HOA didn't exist when those were out there.
Gotcha.
So I have a question. And it's a question I get from a lot of HOAs. In fact, I just had a conversation with Pinnacle Point yesterday where they're asking me about the streetlights and if they're covered and if they're not covered. And it was my understanding that if it's in the interior as opposed to the exterior road.
That would be correct. We do not currently, nor would we, fund the electricity for subdivision streetlights. The difference here is that this is a minor collector. It's not running through, you know, the homes. It's not along the homes.
What, what costs are we looking at to cover these streetlights?
Sorry, it's $325 a month or $3,900 a year.
Okay. And as you talked, this road is a collector road, but it just became a collector road this last year, correct?
It is my understanding that it qualified as a, as a minor collector recently.
Correct. Oh, it wasn't considered in the subdivision then, or?
No, it wasn't ever considered a subdivision street. It's just the classification of it being an official minor collector was really intended for grant-seeking purposes.
Okay. I just want clarification. I'm trying to take all this in and figure it out. So, I mean, if, if it, if it wasn't part of the subdivision per se, I mean, like a subdivision street, then I don't know why the city didn't have it in the first place. I, I don't know. I wasn't around at the time.
Yeah, I think it kinda goes back to the, my, my understanding is the same with Ryan's question is, is the developer sort of just structured it that way and, and it was handed over to the HOA and it just sort of, and then after, you know, when the HOA was there, it took a while, cause in 2008, the market crashed and there were a lot of houses that didn't even get completed. So then the company that was formed up to build that subdivision then went and basically dissolved right after that. And anyway, it's, I think it's definitely related to the question that he had, is that they just handed it over to the HOA and then they just have been stuck with it ever since.
And I guess to Ryan's point, playing devil's advocate to it, is the people moving into that subdivision, if they knew they were paying for these streetlights, you know, it would be part of HOA, you know, you, you move into there, you move in with the indentures that explain everything that they pay for. I mean, I'm just trying to throw everything out there. It was in everybody on the board speaking. And think about where we are with it.
I got my indentures when I moved in, Alderman Johnson, but I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't read them for a while.
Well, and to clarify the comment that city attorney John Young made, there is an, there, there is an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and the streetlights were supposed to be dedicated to the city. So it appears as if at that point in time, the intention was that the city would take on those streetlights, but they were never dedicated to us.
Okay, so that was under the CID?
This was an inter, intergovernmental agreement. John can.
Right, it was an intergovernmental agreement amongst the city, the TDD and the CID.
Okay.
But for some reason, the lights were also constructed on private property, not in the right of way.
That probably confused things, too.
Well.
Since they're not on city property, then.
We have.
They're in private property. They're in private property. Okay. Thanks. That just adds to the whole.
So I actually need direction from the board, um, cause I would, I would need to, to, uh, I need approval on this before, I guess I need authorization to have John Young work on a, uh, an agreement between the HOA, Ameren and the city to take over the streetlights, if that's the direction of the board.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make that motion on, on behalf of, if it was supposed to be there originally.
Yeah.
Uh, transferred to the city and never accomplished. I would, uh, make that motion to go ahead and have John Young draft a, a policy on that.
Motion by Alderman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One nay from Alderman Nae. Okay. Uh, next up is digital sign replacement. Uh, our I T, uh, manager, uh, Rose Mareska is going to give us a presentation on that. Uh, go ahead, Rose.
Thank you. To improve communication with residents, enhance community engagement, promote local events and partnerships, and strengthen emergency preparedness, staff requested a public bid for a replacement outdoor digital sign. The 2025 budget includes 23,000 for this project. The bids we received are attached. Because the Darden Prairie sign is seen by drivers, pedestrians in close proximity, a six millimeter resolution will ensure messages are clear, legible and visually appealing. The recommended vendor is Stewart Signs. The six millimeter digital sign in the amount of $25,844.01. For the budget impact, the recommended sign costs $25,844, exceeding the budget by $2,844.01. The increase is warranted for substantial improvement in display quality and legibility, lifetime wireless service for updates and a 10 year parts warranty. Um, today I'm asking the board to approve the purchase of a sign for $25,844.01, authorizing the additional $2,844.01 from the available funds to complete the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rose. Uh, go ahead and say, mister.
Um, and just to note that that, um, authorizing ordinance is bill number 2553, authorizing the city administrator to exit acute a purchase order with Stewart Signs for an outdoor six millimeter full color digital sign.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on this. Um, this is something that the majority of the residents that I deal with ask for. This is a very informative sign. It sits out here in front of our ball fields out here. And it, it highlights the residents on what's going on in our city. And a lot of the people rely on it. Um, and a lot of them which are elderly like me that don't get on Facebook all the time and all those other things. Um, they're nice. It's nice to see. And it is one of the main roads that we have out there. It's something I've been trying to get done for the last three years. And I'm glad it's to this point. Thank you for, for getting this done. It's, uh, I think it's something we should have done a long time ago.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Uh, anybody, oh, go ahead.
I, I was just going to continue my city administrator comments when, um, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of.
Up, no worries. Um, any other aldermen have any additional, uh, comments on the digital sign? Okay. Uh, so we're going to need a motion to approve the additional funding. Uh, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve additional funding to, uh, purchase the sign selected by our I T manager.
Go move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Gettymire. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Um, so that would, that is approved. Okay. Um, then the last item is the review of the board of aldermen agenda. Did you have something on that, Kathy? Okay. Um, is any, would anybody like to discuss any additional items on the, uh, the agenda for this evening? That would include the consent agenda and new and old business on the regular meeting agenda. Once, or twice, and then heard. Okay. All right. So we'll move on to staff communications. Um, boy, hour went quick. All right. Uh, city attorney.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Uh, city engineer?
I have just a little update. Town square will be finished up hopefully by Friday. They're looking to pour the ADA ramps out there, um, kind of across from the prairie. And they will get all their cones picked up Friday as well.
Okay.
That is all I have.
Sounds great. Thank you. Uh, city administrator, you're up.
Thank you. Um, first I just wanted to, uh, again extend my appreciation to the board and to staff for the budget work session we had the other night, in particular for pushing through to such a late hour so that we could get through the entire budget draft. Um, staff will be following up, um, early next week with any of the questions or additional research that was asked by the board and the first reading on the budget will be at the November 19th meeting. If you recall, at the last meeting, the board requested that staff reach out to all liquor by the drink licensees regarding maintaining regular business hours during the world cup this summer. Um, we did send that communication out. We heard from one, it was from the Knights of Columbus. And they indicated they had no plans to extend their hours. And that is bill 2551 on the agenda this evening. Just a, a reminder that candidate filing dates are coming up. They will be from Tuesday, December 9th through Tuesday, December 23rd. And then again, um, Monday, December 29th and Tuesday, December 30th. Those hours are from eight to 4:30 here at City Hall. And then just a final update on some events. Um, we are coming into the holiday season, but first we have bingo tomorrow at 10:30 a.m. And City Hall is actually closed on Veterans Day, November 11th. On Friday, November 14th, we will have the Tree of Light Celebration here at City Park. This is an annual holiday event, um, hosted by the Salvation Army. We'll have the Salvation Army brass band at 5:30, then the tree lighting at six. And the Discovery Ridge Elementary Choir will perform at 6:15. We have free photos with Santa, cookies and hot cocoa. So it's just a very nice family event. And then on Saturday, November 29th, we have breakfast with Santa. Um, the first session for seating, um, it's Chris's cakes, pancakes. He does a little flip with them. It's lots of fun. Um, the first seating is at 9:30 and the second seating is at 10:30. This does require a $10 donation to the Salvation Army for each individual over six months of age. And you do have to register for that. Registration, um, is on our website. So that's a fun festive breakfast to kind of kick the holiday off. And that concludes my updates.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Great update. Uh, Alderman.
I'd like to say if you're coming to breakfast with Santa to register early, because especially the early session fills up real quick. And it's a lot of fun too. Pancakes are great. Christmas pancakes, if you ever have them.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Uh, anybody else?
Okay, I'm going to hold mine too.
Yeah. All right. I think we're good. Okay. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and hold mine as well. The regular meeting, given it is nearly the top of the hour already. We will, um, adjourn for a five minute break and return here at, uh, 7:05 to go on to the regular meeting. Uh, can I entertain a motion to adjourn the work session? Moved by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman, um, devil, sorry. Uh, all favor? Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Sorry.